Sure. Things that we want to go over before he gets on perhaps and and the Addison Select Board has put together a school option study committee and we appreciate the work they have done. Let us begin by reading the letter that is a board we put out. It says to control costs, to gain local control and own our town's viability and destiny. The Addison Select Board is considering the voter option of dissolution of the ANWSU Union, which is under the purview of town municipalities. Dissolution of the ANWSU would once again create K-12 districts in one operating fashion or another, public or school choice, school governances. Dissolution of the ANWSU would close the current central office. The Addison Select Board has been collecting information leading to their decision to pursue school governance options on behalf of the Addison voters. In November of 2019, the Addison voters disapproved of closing the Addison Elementary School. Three hundred and seventy-three opposed and one hundred and twenty-three in favor. Ignoring the voter results in the Act Forty-Six Articles of Agreements for your guarantee, the ANWSU Board closed Addison Central School June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, using reconfiguration authority. Prior to the Act Forty-Six, ANWSU Union combined local school actual education spending increased one point two million dollars from fiscal year twenty-twelve through fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, while the student enrollment declined one hundred and eighty-one students. Every consolidation effort has been brought to a boil without projected budgets being presented. Under the Act Forty-Six, ANWSU Union, actual education spending increased two point three million dollars from fiscal year twenty-seventeen through fiscal year two thousand and twenty, with a thirty-one student enrollment decline. With Addison Central School closed, education spending has been projected to skyrocket, another six million dollars by fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, which would also include one hundred and eight student enrollment declines. And then it just gives the Zoom. You may have seen in the newspaper this week that there's also an article that says even with the closure of schools, there's unlikely to be any savings. So tonight, we're hoping to have Tom Martin pop in. Haven't seen him on the Zoom yet. If he doesn't pop in, it'll be a very short Zoom meeting. But we want to make sure we use our time wisely when Tom comes on and so side conversations, make sure we raise our hand. If people are watching on YouTube Live or Zoom, there is no opportunity to speak, but if you want to type in a question, our facilitator, David McClellan, will make sure that we get that that question and we'll be able to answer or ask Tom Tom Martin when he comes in. All right. I don't know where to go from here, David.
There's a question already.
Okay.
The question is, I will leave off the name, but it says, why is one of the men at this table in an indoor meeting not wearing a mask?
I have asthma, medical condition. And I'm staying away from people.
I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, that's the reason. It's medical condition. All right, other questions so far? All right. I did text to see if Tom was going to join us. I talked with Tom Martin and I think you have as well. One, the thing that Tom Martin has done, he was in North Bennington, I don't think. Is he still there in North Bennington?
I don't think so.
He took North Bennington from a public school to, I believe they call it a non-operating school district and then was able to do a school choice school there. This what we are trying to do is a little bit different than that because we wouldn't be simply a non-operating school district. We would have to, one of two things, we would have to ask all the member towns of the district to allow us out or to ask to dissolve the union, which would also include all the other five towns. The things that we'd like to talk to Tom Martin about tonight are, what are the pros and cons of consolidation? That there's another consolidation coming. Perhaps with Mount Aide District. We wanted to talk with him a little bit about that. What are the pros and cons? We wanted to ask him, with consolidation, why does everything keep skyrocketing? We were kind of under the impression a little bit that we would see some financial savings. And yet, that doesn't seem to be the case and to see if perhaps he could look at some of those financial statements and see if he can find trends or reasons why that is going up so rapidly. And then to see if he had ideas. He's considered somewhat of an expert in this in this field of taking a district. Just one minute, let's see if he says he needs help. I don't know if that's something David could have. Could you call? Do you know Tom Martin's number?
I do not.
I have it right here. Would you be willing to call it? Or maybe David. David, would you be the best one? Here, let me show you the number. I probably shouldn't say it out loud.
He's an IT expert.
Yeah, David's an IT expert, so maybe he can get him on there.
So, let's see. We're getting at pocket. Have you seen this, Steve?
Not yet. There's certainly been a lot of articles and opinions on what's happening and what people feel should happen.
There are. In fact, I saw on Facebook a question from a resident asking, by the way, I told these guys, in Addison, we've been social distancing for a long time in our school. Right? We have small enough classrooms. They're basically socially distanced. But I did see an article on Facebook asking during this time, why it wouldn't be a great idea to keep Addison open, to spread students out. You know, given that opportunity to spread the kids out, which is probably a good question to be asking.
Well, I heard there was eight kids going to school here, so they're spread out.
Yeah. Currently, there are eight?
That's what I heard, yeah.
Back when we were on the school board, the big problem big problem was too many students and teachers couldn't handle all the room. That's kind of adjusted itself and now it's still not a problem.
That's for sure.
Maybe you should call from Jeff's phone. He might not answer from your phone because he doesn't doesn't recognize the number.
I don't know if he recognized mine, but.
Well, if you've conversed before.
I have talked with him on it.
If he took the time to save the number, then he would know who was calling.
Farmers Zoom meeting, huh? Our farmers Zoom meeting isn't working very well.
Well, even early on, the Indians and the smoke signals had technical difficulties.
This is David McClellan calling on behalf of the Addison County Select Board. I heard you having trouble getting into the Zoom meeting. Okay. I'm thinking that's the wrong number.
Wrong number. Well, that'll do it. Is there a possibility we could pause and is that?
I can, I can always shut it down. Is that your wife? Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, you can answer. Just tell her that.
She sent us. Okay. All right, we'll give them a call. Thanks. Wrong number. Should be able to see them right. I'll try to combine yours and then.
Is that, is that a five-digit number?
This isn't vocal already.
Let's call him.
You can find that out by answering it. You could.
Yeah, I don't represent the town. Maybe buy something.
Your warranty might get extended.
Hello? Hello, there's a whole lot of homes going on here.
Someone just picked it up. Nothing?
Nothing. That'll tell them.
That one?
Hello? Nothing.
You gotta be a little quicker on the drop.
I don't think we are in time.
I didn't go that too long. Didn't realize there was that important.
Lucky. You got two lines.
You do?
We got the seventeen line and the twenty-two line.
We actually have a little bit of the one twenty-five line, too.
Not anywhere near here, though.
No, that's true.
Hello, this is David McClellan. I'm calling on behalf of the Addison County Select Board. I heard you having trouble with the Zoom meeting. Hmm. You ended up at the wrong link.
Have you?
You have anything else that I can send you?
I've seen all of them, so.
I like these electricity bells.
Okay, I will send that out.
I got nothing.
Sorry, well, that must have been a miscommunication on the end.
Is it a decimal point issue?
Yeah.
Those two points off.
All right, so this ought to work now, huh?
Yeah, give me two, three minutes.
Okay. We're gonna turn this off for a few minutes.
So you said mom's mobile. How's dad doing?
Tom, can you hear us? He's currently.
Can you hear me?
There's a question while we're waiting.
Okay.
Why are you called Addison County Select Board?
We're not. We're just the Addison Select Board.
I'm sure, because I thought it wouldn't be visible.
You are. You are visible. The camera right there. Smile. And that's the microphone right there, just recording everything. Hi, folks.
I gotta put my shirt on.
Attaboy. Is he up there?
You should be. Tom, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Did that speaker in the middle go to sleep or not?
So, how do you unsleep it?
Press power button until the red light comes on. Nope, it was a week. Try it again.
Do you want to keep pressing the plus button?
Yeah, give it a shot.
When you, I lost you when you did that.
All right.
Yep.
I usually get outsourced when it comes to technology.
All right. Can you hear us now, Tom?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Hey! There we go. All right, Tom, thanks for joining us. Oh, God, I'm glad I can help. I hope I can help. I'll do anything that I can. I can hear you. Can you hear me? We can hear you. We can hear you.
We've got a bit of an echo.
There we go. Tom, thanks for joining us. Oh, God, I'm glad I can do what I can.
Somebody has the stream up.
Do you have the? Tom, thanks for joining us. Oh, God, I'm glad I can do like that. Tom, thanks for joining us. Oh, God, I'm glad I can. I think we're feeding through and picking it back up off the speaker, right?
All right, Tom, let's try that again.
I can hear you.
Yay!
All right. We kept hearing it echoing back and over again, so. So, Tom, why don't you just give us a little bit of your background, maybe three or four minutes and give us some of your resume. Are we set? So, Tom, why don't you just give us a little bit of your background, maybe three or four? Yeah, go ahead. I, I lost the audio.
You're not losing it, Tom, I'm just muting it to reduce the echo.
Okay. Okay. So, okay for me to start? Yeah, go right ahead. Okay, so I think the most relevant information for you, it was, I'm trying to think, two thousand eight, seven, I think. I started working in the North Bennington Graded School District. You know, I had retired over here in New York. I was a school administrator for, oh, God, twenty-some years and a variety of circumstances got me over to North Bennington. Some of, some of it, I wound up working as the principal at North Bennington Graded Elementary School. And during the interview process, you know, there were community members and staff, obviously members of the board. One of the concerns that surfaced, you know, was very prevalent in the conversations, you know, about the school, was the concern the community had about the school surviving. So, they were asking me if I was willing to stay on and and find a way to preserve the elementary school because they felt it was so critical to the community. A variety of perspectives and and so, early on, I, you know, I kind of understood that that was, that was part of what we were going to try to do is figure out a way to make sure that, you know, the community held on to their elementary school. Now,
There's a pause for dramatic effect.
He probably hasn't realized that I muted him.
Just think, a hundred years, we won't have these problems anymore. Might not be here in a hundred years. I know I won't. I'm pretty sure I won't. If he chose his parents wisely, he might still be here.
As what, his cards?
If he chose his parents wisely, he might still be here. There's a quote in the paper, a guy turned hundred and six, and I said, what's the key to his longevity? And he said, he chose wisely.
Right guy.
Is he still talking away there, David?
I don't know. He's muted because of the echo. I asked him to unmute. I called. I went and stretched your voice now.
Well, we're not gonna let this go on very long, I don't think. This is kind of wasting everyone's time, so. If try it again next month. No. I think you definitely need to practice this before you try and fly the plane. Helps. Well, all these things are what you learn on the way to the crash site, and you just know where the crash site is quickly. Good luck.
No answer still.
Is there a way to apologize to the people who Zoomed in?
I think we can tell them right there.
If you feel guilty, maybe they'll call in.
Be nice.
Yeah. The one thing we want the community to know is that as a select board, we are dedicated to doing what we can to continue a school in Addison. Or some way to give our, to give our families school choice, so that they can choose where their children will be educated. And that was what we kind of hoped to convey here tonight and was kind of the result of the the school option study committee, who came back and said, at this point, it looks like the best option is to work on possibly dissolving the union, bringing the school choice back to the town of Addison. And we're concerned not only for the education of our children, but for the viability of our town. That towns without schools have a very difficult time. And so, we're concerned about our tax or land values and the ability to educate our children and not maybe have to have them go all the way to Virgin's. If they're a school choice, maybe to go to Bridgeport. You know, go where they'd like, so. I don't know if we, if we want to, you know, say our apologies and end this, because I don't think Tom is going to be able to make it with us, is he? Who is that, Tom?
That's your wife. Hello again. I've attempted calling him a few times with no answer. We've, I'm trying to call him. I've called him a few times and haven't.
Can you hear me?
There he is.
I'm here. All right, and we don't have the echo.
So far, yeah.
All right. Well, we didn't catch a lot of that, but our time is scooting. Can I ask you just maybe if you could give us some of the pros and cons of consolidation as far as you see it? Well, there were concerns that we had about consolidation upfront and one of the things that was challenging for us is that, you know, we started to become more and more distrustful of what the State Education Department was telling us. You know, they were assuring us that schools weren't going to close and that that was not the intent. But, you know, there were many of us who were involved in this process that were skeptical that that was in fact the case. What we saw as maybe the better way to answer a question, the benefits of what we did, which was to become non-operating and give folks choice, we saw it as a way, initially, it was, you know, the intent was to see if it would, you know, create a, you know, a governance structure that would allow the school to survive, but what became also apparent and equally important, you know, the benefit was it created a governance structure where the community had true control over what happened in the school and its community. It was truly community-based control, you know, place-based education. And that became, I think, as important to the community as the the issues of school survival and cost and so on. It was becoming a clear understanding that we were going to be able to create a structure where teachers and community were in control of what happened in their community school. And I think that's the benefit. I think, you know, the converse is as you consolidate, you know, the decisions about what happens in your community and in your school are farther and farther away from the point of service. And as decisions get made further away from the point of service, they become less and less effective. And, you know, the folks that advocate for consolidations don't seem to want to accept that basic understanding that schools are not run well when they're managed from remote locations, far away. You know, it teachers know best what needs to happen in their classrooms. And communities know best what they want for their children. And the further you take that control away, the harder it is for a school to be effective. You know, one of the fascinating things that we observed is, you know, our teaching staff and how they embraced this change because they grew to understand that they would become empowered in their classrooms. Because it was, again, local control. That they would have control over what they taught, how they evaluated it, when it was evaluated, what the school calendar looked like. All those things we took control of when we became independent. As you consolidate, you lose your ability to control some of those critical functions that go on in the school, so. I, you know, again, I've been in education now, God, forty-some years, and it was one of the most, I think, enlightening processes I ever went through. I went away from it, understanding that this is the way schools should be run. What is happening in North Bennington is the way a school should function. You know, it's, it was wonderful to see. I saddened to hear that your elementary school closed when I talked to Carol. But I wish, you know, I said to her, I wish I could say that I was surprised because I wasn't.
We were kind of sad, too.
Yeah, I, it's unfortunate that this process has unfolded the way it has, but again, we were confident that that's where this was going. You know, I'm pretty certain that our school in North Bennington would be in the same place you're in had we not done what we did. We were also pretty confident that Act Forty-Six was a direct result of what we did in North Bennington. They were, they were intent on finding a way to be sure that what happened in North Bennington would never happen again. So, I, you know, I, I think, you know, your best hope forward is if you can find a path to create a non-operating district so that parents hope forward is if you can find a path to create a non-operating district so that parents have choice. And then simultaneously, you know, you could start to look at how you can get your independent school up and running. But that school choice piece is the critical component. And, you know, the challenge is educating people on what that means. Because it's very frightening for people to hear that you're advocating to close their school, to make the district non-operating. And you have to educate them as to what that means, because most folks do not understand it. And I learned that even folks in education don't understand.
They sort of already checked that box for us, haven't they? Somewhat, yeah. That we are closed, but we're not not operating.
Well, you're part of a consolidated district now.
Right, yes.
So the only way you could establish non-operating status would be to get the entire consolidated district to agree to close. And I think that's gonna be a heavy lift for you. I suspect, and again, I, you know, I've been away from this for a couple of years, I don't know what the process would be, but I suspect it would be challenging for you to re-establish Addison as a standalone school district. Because you've gone down that path of dissolving the district. And I assume from what I've been told, you've liquidated your assets. You've turned them over to the consolidated board. So, yeah, boy.
And you know that, just that finality, there almost seems like, you know, we're a bridge too far.
Well, I mean, you certainly have the ability to establish an independent school. The two functions are actually separate and distinct from each other. You know, there is an application process, you know, that you have to go through to set up an independent school. The challenge you will face is that your population would have to pay tuition. And, you know, for a lot of families, that's a lot to ask of them. And so your ability to draw, you know, that population from your community that I think you'd hope to want to serve is gonna be hindered by the fact that you don't have school choice.
Right, one of the hopes is that people would see, even this week in the Addison Independent, we had an article there that even with closing schools, there wouldn't be much savings. Why, why with schools closing in a consolidation, would the cost continue to increase so rapidly?
Yeah, it's one of the. It's not, it's an untruth. When they tell you that consolidation saves money. And, you know, what I've learned from, you know, the experience I've had is bureaucracies, all bureaucracies, whether it's education or, you know, the medical community, doesn't matter. They have certain bedrock principles, and one of them is survival. Bureaucracies want to continue, and if possible, expand. And what often results from consolidation is an expansion of the bureaucracy. So I suspect up in your consolidated district, it would not surprise me to find out that you probably have more central office staff.
Oh, yeah.
You have more folks providing what are, you know, purported to be critical services that never touch a classroom, that never see a child.
Is that common of consolidated districts?
Ah, yes, it is. It's not uncommon at all. You know, I saw down in our supervisory union, you know, the size of the bureaucracy, the number of folks over there that were responsible for all the different components connected to schools. And the defense of some of it, some of it has to do with the pile upon pile of regulations that that schools have to cope with. You know, we found out, you know, the three years that I was there running the independent school, the areas where we had the greatest challenge, were the areas where we had to interface with educational services that were regulated by the federal state government. Where we really struggled to make things work were special education. And it wasn't the services to children, but it was the bureaucracy, the weight of the regulatory oversight. Made efficiencies really, really challenging. Believe it or not, school lunch. I used to keep in my office, because that was one of the things we did, we had to start a school lunch program. I had three full, three-ring binders of regulations that governed school lunch. Just making sure that, you know, little five and six-year-olds had a peanut butter and jelly sandwich or, you know, chicken nuggets. You know, I remember telling my secretary, you know, when we were going through the process to get approval, we had to be vetted by the Department of Homeland Security and NATO. When we applied to become a food service establishment under the US Department of Agriculture, so we could receive, you know, the school food services. You know, and again, the application was lengthy, you know, because I assume they're trying to ensure that I'm not, I wasn't funneling money to some terrorist organization, I guess. That's what they were trying to make sure. But, you know, again, the regulatory oversight for that was huge, and when you consolidate, because you're dealing with so many children, so many families. I suspect that, for example, in your supervisory unit, in your consolidated district, there are probably more than one individual whose sole job it is to manage the free and reduced lunch program for your consolidated district. Again, they never see a child, all they do all day is manage the regulatory oversight for that lunch program. That's what they do. And they're paid a salary, obviously, you know. And, you know, taxpayers have to support that, to make sure the lunch program is done the way it's supposed to be done.
They're in North Bennington, when you came away from the school district and went independent or non-operating, did you see the school budget decrease?
We did, we were able to generate savings from doing what we did. And again, the state education department wasn't happy with what we did, and they they often would misrepresent the information, but what we saw was, again, greater efficiencies. I, you know, I was the headmaster of the school, superintendent, chief school officer, whatever label you want to put on. And I wore all those hats, I took care of free and reduced lunch, I took care of special education. You know, I was the person that did all those things. We didn't have a host of administrators that, you know, were lined up and down the office, so. You know, I think in some ways, you know, we were able to generate some savings for the community because we kept our operations relatively small, relatively lean. You know, we found ways to partner with the community to provide services, you know, things that we could do you know, more effectively, you know, for example, the community had always wanted a foreign language program. And again, I tried to start one when we were a public school, but there were all kinds of roadblocks to starting foreign language in North Bennington, there was a policy in our supervisory union that, you know, a school couldn't start a program unless all the schools did it. And there were all kinds of roadblocks. When we became independent, you know, we set up this really, really neat partnership with the Bennington College, we're located right nearby our campus. And, you know, we had upper-level foreign language students come in and do foreign language. We were doing French, Spanish, and Mandarin at North Bennington, starting in, you know, in the kindergarten. And all the way up through sixth grade. Now, it would be really challenging to do what we did with that college program in our school. And if we were operating as a public school, there would have been a host of issues that would have made it difficult.
Right, we keep hearing about the equity, the equity. Is there a possibility that you could help us look at our budgets and find efficiencies or? It just seems like there's so much money that's going into our district, and it just keeps getting greater and greater and greater.
And what's, I suspect what's disheartening to your teaching staff is that their class sizes probably have not gotten any smaller. They probably feel at times as though they receive, if not less, certainly no more than they were getting before. And yet you, as a taxpayer, are spending more. And, you know, therein lies the challenge. You know, I, you know, at the time I was still there, there was a lot of conversation about class sizes, and they would often talk about this, the student-teacher ratio, you know, and how low it was in Vermont, you know, and you'd hear numbers like, you know, it was four to one or five to one or, you know, and I can remember our teaching staff saying, I don't know what school they're visiting, but I don't have five kids in my class. And what I had to help them understand is, is that, again, and some of this has to do with the way schools are now set up. We hire a host of different people in the school. And, you know, there are many of them are licensed, you know, they're certified, and we assign responsibilities to them. And it creates this ratio that gives the impression that, yeah, there's an adult for every five kids. But in the classroom, where the rubber meets the road, where, you know, where reading is taught and where math is taught, it isn't five. Because, you know, we've set it up in such a way that we compartmentalize music instruction, so we have a music teacher, we compartmentalize art instructions, we have an art teacher, then we have a counselor, and then we have we have a PE teacher, we have this teacher and that teacher. And so, you know, we divide up those services, and when you look at them, in some ways, it's not very efficient. It's very costly to do some of these services that way. And we were in the process in North Bennington of looking at all that, trying to figure out, you know, is there better ways to deliver those services? You know, and educate children the way they were meant to be educated, rather than, you know, compartmentalizing the instruction, compartmentalizing grade levels. You know, it's like, you know, kids have a date of manufacture, so that's when we. You know, they were manufacturing this date, so they have to go into this spot, you know. When you step back from some of these things, they don't make a lot of sense, and they're not particularly efficient. Unfortunately, again.
Can I stop you right there for a minute, Tom? We have a question that's come in, maybe we can answer that.
So the question's from Tim, I won't give last name, let's be optimistic, what are the next steps if we are able to convince the entire district to agree to close and become a non-operating district? So I want to know what next steps are.
Okay.
Well, I could tell you what the process would be for you, you know, kind of mirroring what you did in North Bennington. You would be working simultaneously to educate your community about what will eventually become a ballot item, asking them to support non-operating status, closing public schools. And that, you know, takes, again, a lot of work, a lot of work with your community, a lot of work with your staff, because it's very frightening to them. You know, as you start to talk about this. And then simultaneously, you need to have a group of folks working on an application for your independent school, so that you can give your families the peace of mind to know that as they support this concept of becoming non-operating, there is in fact going to be a place for their children to attend school. That, you know, in September, when, you know, it's time for kids to go back, there is a place for them to go. So you have to be doing that work of setting up the school while you're at the same time making sure people understand what you're asking them to support and why you're asking them to support it. So those are the two things that have to happen at the same time.
Do you have to do both? Could we be a non-operating school district as a choice district? And not have an independent school?
The answer, absolutely. You know, and there are districts like that, in the state of Vermont, there are non-operating districts that do not have a school at all.
Okay.
I mean, for example, you know, I'm sure, you know, for you folks visit Manchester, Manchester has no secondary schools, I think it's nine of the districts in and around Manchester are non-operating at the high school level. For example, Dorset is an elementary district, there is no Dorset, there is no high school in Dorset. That's also true of Manchester. Manchester is an elementary school, operating at the elementary level, non-operating at the high school level. So those communities have choice at the secondary level. And what most of the families do is they send their children to Burn Burton. Because they have choice, but they don't have to, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, I'm sure there are some families who who choose to send their kids to, you know, other schools, which they have the right to do.
So it could be either or, or both of those.
That's correct, I mean.
So James asked, does tuition charge in North Bennington, and do the taxpayers in town pay real estate tax to support its schools?
So the answer is, North Bennington is still a public school district. And like all districts, it has an elected board, it's called the Prudential Committee. I believe it used to be, I think there still are five members. And like all public boards, public school boards, they have the authority to tax, they have an annual meeting. They have a budget. The only difference is they do not have a school, so when they assemble their budget, they're assembling a budget that focuses on paying the tuition for where the parents who reside in that district choose to send their children.
And so, if you have. If you have a school choice district and you tuition your students.
Yep.
Would only pay the tuition on the number of students you send somewhere, right?
You would pay tuition for all of your resident children, but you would have to determine, the state does prescribe what the tuition is for elementary and secondary level students. And as a board, you collect taxes to pay that tuition. Now, you can, as a board, authorize higher tuition payments if you so choose to do that. Now, that's where the concept of a town academy emerged. And what's fascinating about this is it's not an education law in Vermont. It's just, it's been a longstanding practice that goes back to colonial times. And the way the process works at St. John's Berry, or Thetford, or or Burn Burton, or Lyndon Institute, those are the historic academies in Vermont. The boards that exist, serve those communities make an agreement with the independent school that is located in their community. And the agreement basically says that if the board supports the rate of tuition that the school sets, the school in return agrees to take all the children. So the issue that someone raised a few minutes ago about equity was an important one that came up in North Bennington, because most people think, well, gee, an independent school means admissions, that means some kids aren't going to get in, and what we wanted them to understand is our intent was to form what is called a town academy. Which meant that if the public board supports the tuition rate the independent school sets, the independent school agrees to take all the resident children from that district. Doesn't matter how capable they are academically, special education, doesn't matter, we take them all. So in essence, the village school in North Bennington operates as a public school for the North Bennington residents. If you live in North Bennington, you have a right to send your child there. The village school cannot turn you away. We will take you. So that's the response to equity. Now, that process works very much the same for Burn Burton, St. John's Berry, Thetford, and Lyndon Institute. There is one other elementary district in the in the state, it's the Mountain School over in, I think, Bonneville, right outside of Manchester. There's a town academy at the elementary level, there are only two, the village school in North Bennington and the Mountain School outside of Manchester.
All right, other questions there, David? What questions does the board have? Well, the next step is just education, education, education.
Yeah, I mean, you'd want to put a bond or, you know, some kind of a ballot item together that, you know, that would ask voters to support, you know, this initiative. And then, like I said, I think it would be a lot of education, particularly, you know, again, if you're doing it throughout your consolidated district. You'd have to spend the time making sure that all those communities understood exactly what this meant. And then the question would be, you know, what happens to those public schools that exist in your community? My understanding is you have a high school, a middle school, and then you have elementary schools in some of the communities. You know, you'd have to be able to answer that question, what's gonna happen if those communities agree to become non-operating? What happens to those schools? And then you'd have to make the decision as a group, whether or not you decided you wanted to have an independent school. You know, would you want an independent school, you know, for the communities, you know, to send their children to? And if so, you'd have to start that application process. A lot of decisions have to be made about what happens to the staff and those schools that are currently functioning as public schools, you know, what would be their fate? You know, if the schools were to close. And again, we went through, like, it's, it takes a lot of education for your staff, so that they understand what this means to them. In essence, what happened in North Bennington on June thirtieth, after the voters had approved the you know, the closure, the board supported it, and then we had the state education department eventually, the state board eventually approved our application. On June thirtieth, all of those employees at the North Bennington Greater School District, including myself, were laid off. And then July first, we rehired them as the independent school. And then July 1st, we rehired them, uh, as the independent school. And now one of the things, you know, challenge, one of many things I had to take care of, I had to make sure that that transition for all those employees went smoothly. We had to take care of, you know, all the human resource issues, health insurance, retirement, uh, dental insurance. You know, all those things had to be put in place, you know, because we became the employer. In essence, you know, so, um, you know, you had to have all that in place, ready to go on July 1st when the school opened.
All right. We have a couple of questions here. Let's take, let's take both of them.
Okay. So Tim asks, what municipal board, school, town or city controls the question of having a vote?
I didn't hear the last part of having the.
Having a vote.
I believe for us, it was the, it was the school board, it was the school board that controlled that. The board of the district is, was the, in control, as they would be for any ballot item that they put forth. Um, you know, really regarding their district. So it was our, our public board controlled the wording of that ballot, the scheduling of the vote uh, and the hearings that, you know, related to it. Uh, so that it's the public board that would control that aspect of it. We also had a, a, um, an ad hoc committee of, of community members um, that was responsible for overseeing the creation of the independent school, the application process and how that school is going to be formed. So, you know, those, again, those two functions were operating simultaneously.
Okay. And the second question, David?
Actually two more, but we'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
Scott says, what are the Addison School building? Who technically owns the building and what would happen if the school district was dissolved?
That was, again, another one of those questions you had to sort through. And it was also, I think, a kind of a backdrop to the concerns over consolidation. There was a lot of concerns, you know, the, the, the North Bennington Greater School District owned the building. And it, 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 it's an absolutely wonderful facility. It was built, you know, back in the eighteen, you know, fifties initially. And it's just, it was just, it's a beautiful old building and the community was very much attached to it, didn't want to lose it. So we set up a process, the, the public board continues to own the building to this day. And the independent school leases the facility from them to operate their program. So one of the other things we did is we negotiated a lease arrangement uh, between what became the Board of Trustees of the independent school and the public school district. So there's a lease agreement that, you know, spells out the terms and conditions of the lease. And there's a lease payment that's made by the independent school to the public district to use the building. That is one way that I do it. I, we did explore the concept of, of selling the school to the independent school. The board was, at, at the time I was there, was pretty adamant, they didn't want to do that. They wanted to maintain ownership. So that's what they have done. You know, there are independent schools that own their own facility. Um, so again, that would be one of those questions that you'd, you'd want to explore. You know, what, what would you do with the assets that the public district owned? When, um, if the community were to support closure of the public school?
And, and I think currently the district owns that school, that building.
The consolidated district?
Consolidated district owns all the buildings at this time.
I, I would suspect that's the case.
Yeah.
So if, 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 if the consolidated district became not operating, they would, they would certainly continue to own those facilities if they chose to do so.
Yeah.
And if you chose to have an independent school, you could, in fact, as we did in North Bennington, you could lease from them. You know, you set up some type of a lease arrangement. You could sell, I, I suppose, to the independent school if you wanted to. Those would be, again, facility issues would be one of the things you'd, you'd want to work through if, if you go through this process, for sure.
Another question, David?
Yeah. Um, anonymous asked, are you thinking about purchasing VHS to then make it an independent school? Is this mainly to avoid federal oversight?
No, it's not. We're, we're not interested in, uh, getting out of federal oversight. We're primarily interested in cost containment and local control.
Uh, more overly, uh, also town viability, ver- very, quite often towns really struggle after they lose a school.
Well, that was a concern in North Bennington. You know, it, it, again, you know, it's, it's a relatively small geographic footprint that the community has. And most of the, the housing real estate is, is fixed. There isn't any vacant land. So, you know, as there's turnover in those existing homes, you know, the concern was, you know, what is the attraction for a young family to move into North Bennington if there's no school? You know, why would a young family move and live in, in, in the community if there's not a school? One of the things that's somewhat unique about North Bennington is the kids walk. We, we, there's no buses. So they all walk to school. And, um, you know, that kind of played into this as well, you know, because again, it created that kind of close knit sense of, of community there. But, um, that was a, a very powerful concern that, that folks had about, you know, the loss of the school and how that would affect, you know, the culture of the community. And would, would North Bennington as a village survive if the school closed? You know, many people had said that, you know, the school was the heart of the community. That, you know, that's, yeah, it was the heartbeat of the community. And they, they wanted to, at all costs, try to find a way to keep it there.
So the other part of that question is buying the high school. We, we don't have any intention of doing that. But i- if the union was to dissolve, there is the possibility that that be, could become a town academy as well.
If, if you became non-operating, you certainly would have that
Right.
option for sure. I mean, you know, you'd have to consider, you know, it, you know, what you want to take on. You know, as, as you go through this process, you know, would you, would you be non-operating K-12? And then, you know, give people choice at the secondary level and just try to establish an elementary school? Um, you know, you'd have to, those are all issues you'd have to kind of, you know, work out as you went through this process.
Another one?
Um, there's actually two. We'll start with the first one. Are state-approved independent schools totally free from state regulations?
Um, the answer is no. There are, you know, and, and rightfully so, there, there is, you know, state oversight of, of independent schools. Independent schools do have more autonomy than, than, than public schools. Uh, they have more autonomy over, you know, over their budgets. They have more autonomy over their staffing. They have more autonomy in it where I think where the real issue is over programming. So there is, there is a, a level of local control that, that independent schools have. But again, they're not free from the regulatory oversight for the lunch program, for example. You know, i- if you receive, you know, the, the, participate in the, in the US Department of Agriculture lunch program, then you are subject to the regulations that govern that. And the same thing is true in special education. If you're going to offer special education services in your community, you know, you're going to be subject to the regulatory oversight, you know, of the federal government and the state government or issues relating to special education. Where you do have more flexibility are in issues, you know, that are programmatic, you know. You know, things like, you know, what your report card looks like, what your school calendar looks like. You know, I, I remember a really fascinating conversation that we had during the summer when we were having, you know, staff meetings, you know, setting up the school year and, you know, talking about the school calendar. We got into the issue of, of, you know, parent conference days and why we have half days. You know, why do you let kids out at noon, you know, for parent conferences, you know, parents work the day, you know, why do you do that? And, you know, my staff was, was great. They're just such wonderful people. They really were, you know. They eventually figured out that, that you do that not because it's good for parents or kids. But you do it because it's, it's usually embedded in a, in, in contractual language, you know, you know, related to, um, you know, the bargaining unit. And, um, so we were unfettered from that. So then the question was, what's the best way to do parent conferences? How do you set all this up? And, um, you know, we took those half days out of our calendar because they didn't seem to serve much purpose. You know, they weren't very used to us. So those are examples of areas where you do have an awful lot of control. I can remember the staff lamenting, you know, about report cards. They used to complain about the report card that's kind of handed to them. And, you know, how they had to report on student progress. You know, it was kind of a, the yin and yang. They were excited about the fact that they could now create a reporting system that was meaningful to them and to parents. You know, they could actually sit down and talk with parents about how their kids were doing in their, in their class. But it was a lot of work, you know, doing that was, was a lot of effort, was a heavy lift to make, you know, that meaningful reporting system, you know. There is sometimes a benefit when someone else does it for you. Many can complain about it, you know, but.
All right. Ready for another one?
Sure.
Right?
This is bringing back memories. I've been away from this for a few years, so I'm, I'm remembering all. I, I'm retired. I got away from it, but it's, it's bringing back all these memories, you know. It's actually kind of interesting to me. So absolutely. Keep asking.
If the district is dissolved, does the district board dissolve? And then does each community go ahead on its own?
I, the answer i- i- in, in general would be no. You would still be a public school district. And I, I believe because you have agreed to consolidate at this point, I, I don't know if there's a path back to having individual boards in your communities like you had prior to consolidation. I, I don't know about that. I, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that minimally what would happen if, if you prepared a ballot item and the voters supported uh, a ballot item that made your district not operating, where you would be at that point in time is you would have a public board, your current consolidated board would be the public board for that non-operating district. And they would operate as they do now. They would continue to have oversight of educational services in that district. The only, you know, the major change being they would no longer have buildings that they would operate. They would now be tuitioning kids in the program. So I think that would be the structure you'd end up with. I, I, I don't know if there's a path to undo the consolidation. That I'm not sure of. Consolidation kind of happened after we had done what we had done. So.
Aren't, uh, aren't cost issues often a result of federal oversight? How will you pay for transportation, which is a huge cost for your independent school?
Uh, there's no doubt that, you know, you know, it's just, you know, sometimes an unspoken reality. Regulations, regulatory oversight has a certain cost attached to it. There's no doubt. You know, it, it costs money to, to develop the regulations, to manage them, to, you know, to complete the paperwork. Somebody has to oversee it. There's costs associated with it. Regulations have a cost. And as I said before, you're not going to be totally removed from those, although there are ways, for example, in the lunch program. If you don't accept, you know, the US Department of Agriculture food subsidies and, and, you know, you don't participate in the free and reduced lunch program, you can run your own lunch program. I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, you'd have to, you'd have to check this. I think Burn Burton removed themselves from the USDA program. I think they did. Be sure. And they did it because they wanted to have control over the lunch program. You know, it's, it's again, local control. My understanding is they were going through that process, you know, um, back when I was, um, on my way to retiring, I think they were, because I was thinking about it because it was so frustrating to me. You know, the, um, the oversight of the lunch program. So.
Another question?
Yep.
Sure.
What, what all towns in our district have to approve non-operating status? Or will it simply, for a simple majority of all voters be effective?
Yeah, you'd have to, you're going to have to get someone that has an understanding of, of what your consolidated charter says. There must be some language in there that tells you how your district is structured and what authority the individual component communities have. Um, you know, I, you know, for example, if Addison wanted to withdraw from your consolidated district, is there a language in that consolidated, you know, the agreement that was struck that gives them the ability to do that? You have, you have to research it, right? And then again, if you were to have a vote on a ballot item about not operating, is it a majority of the entire consolidated district? Or is it a vote by each community? I, I would think what that information should be in, in your, whatever your agreement was.
Okay.
Not sure.
All right. Are there other questions? Cause we, we still have a select board meeting.
Oh, I know. I, I, I hope I didn't take up too much of your time.
No, no, you didn't. And we had some snafus. This has been extremely helpful. Um, just let me say to those who might be watching, if you have other questions, just because we stopped zooming doesn't mean you can't ask your questions.
Well, yeah, and I'd be happy if, if you want to email them to me or something. I, I'd be, I'd do my very best to answer.
We'll continue to field any questions that people might have and, and we'll get answers back to you. And what we'll do is we'll post them on the, on the town website. Um, which, oh boy, we have a great one. Um, addisondt.org. Uh, so we'll, 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 uh, open that up to anybody who might have questions that wants to send those into the select board. We'll get answers and we'll post them on this, on the, uh, town website. Appreciate David McClellan helping us out with, with, uh, technology tonight. And, and Tom, we really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and, and giving us some good information. And, and boy, we got some work to do if we want to move forward.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I, I've said to Carol a couple of times, I, I, I would help you out any way that I can. You know, like I said, it was, it, it was an eye-opening experience for me to see the difference this made for the, our community, for that community and for that school. It, it, you know, I went away thinking, you know, that towards the end of my career, it's the way schools should be run. You know, this is, this is how schools should operate. So again, I'll help you out any way I can.
All right. Thank you very much. And again,
You're welcome.
everybody for tuning in and, and, uh, please let us know if you have other questions and, and we appreciate it. Thank you, David.